Everybody's so quiet and waiting. I want to call this board or meeting of the Summit Falls School Board to order. And please note attendance Denise. Shelley's food? Sorry Debbie.
Sorry Tom. That was good.
What'd you say?
It's okay Tom.
That's fine, that's fine. I called worse. I'm sorry. I don't know, that just came out of habit. I don't know what, I don't know.
Right for you.
No excuse. Shelley's with us on the phone tonight. She's gone, so she's here with us on the phone. So, we will move into our discussion items. Our proposed 2019 through 23 Strategic Visioning Plan. Jerry Clark.
Thank you very much.
Did you just drive over today?
We did and the San Yam is looking beautiful and
I bet it was
Detroit is full and everything's green and nice.
Bet it was a nice day for a drive over.
I would like to say that my wife came with me tonight. Hello. And my wonderful wife has been recovering from a very serious bicycle accident. So really happy that she's able to travel. She always did with me before, but for the last couple of years, it's been a little difficult. So we're back in the cell.
Oh, good, good.
And nice to share. She'll give me a good critique on how I did on the way home.
She says yeah.
I have put together a presentation within the timelines that Andy mentioned that have four key components to it. And I'd like to mention those and then go into a little bit of detail on each one. The first one will be a thanks. The second is to talk about the real purpose of the work. And I'd like to spend some good time on that. The third, I want to go back to the focus group report that we delivered to you in December. And then finally, I'd like to concentrate on the three strategic goals. At any time that I'm speaking, I would very much appreciate if you would let me know that you would like to make a comment, enhance a statement, refute a statement, or just have a question. And I think the more interaction we have, the more helpful it'll be for you and the better I'll feel about being a good presenter. So please have those questions and comments coming at any time. I was mentioning with board member, I'm not sure Urban if I can pronounce your last name.
Stadly.
Stadly. How appreciative I have been, the way I've been treated by the community. Not just this year, but going five years back when we first started our work. And of course Derrick and golly Debbie and Andy and the whole team that I worked with have been extremely supportive. But I've also found that in the merchants in the community. Any restaurant that I've been at, where I've stayed at a hotel, walking in the garden or downtown. And it's a really good, very good feeling. So I want to thank the board, the community, and the people that I worked with. And it is a little bittersweet to be here tonight because I'm guessing that this will be the last time I'll be able to be with you and present to you. But I sure have good thoughts and feelings about you and your community and the school district. Secondly, I was asked recently what the purpose of a strategic plan is. And I gave a response. But I thought about that again tonight and I wanted with no books or anything else written, just to put it in my own language for you. Having done this as a consultant with a number of districts around the state the last eight years, here's what I think is the purpose of our work and what we did in the last eight months. Is for an organization to develop a comprehensive plan to prioritize. And that's a key word. The most effective improvements possible based on available representative input and analytic data. So my view of the work is how is it that we can bring data forward to decision makers in the district, especially at the board? And I would say especially at the budget committee level to make hard, tough decisions. And to be able to go out and do a whole bunch of groundwork that can bring data to you that you are able to have confidence in and make decisions from. And with the amount of time and energy that we have to put into that work, it's much more than you as a board could do. And so I see it as a navigation tool. A way to have really good data to make decisions from. And then there's a second thing that we really haven't talked about. And that is there has been something at the state level required of school districts called the Consolidated District Improvement Plan. And it's in Oregon statute and it's in Oregon administrative rules. And what it says is every three years, a district is supposed to go through a comprehensive self-review improvement process. But five years ago, even though that's in the books, it went silent. And the State Department of Ed no longer required it. But now, I think you know, following what's going on in the legislature, there's a great move for more accountability from school districts. And it's not just we will have these grants that you can apply for, but we will have these grants and we want enhanced, a great deal more accountability. So on October 31st, Andy will need to certify that you have gone through that process and send the data forward to the State Department of Ed who then will look over that and either approve it or not approve it. So really, we're working with two purposes here. One, a decision making tool for you. And secondly, following a state statute and requirement that has been put back on the active report list that was not there earlier. And I want to mention to you what the components are of the district improvement plan. The first one is a district vision. You know that we have that in our report. Secondly, is a district mission statement. We have that in our report. Third, prioritize strategic goals. And they suggest three to five. We have three. And we have three because we feel with fewer goals, they're more likely to be accomplished and there will be more focus and resources put toward them. And then lastly, and the fourth is a district implementation plan. And as you looked at the report, you noticed a page that has performance indicators. And during this next year, Andy and his staff along with you will be looking at what are the benchmarks that we should measure on how we are accomplishing our goals or not. And those benchmarks will come from a lot of work that will be done in this year. So in the second year of the plan, you will have very accurate benchmarks from this year that you'll be able to measure for the next four years going forward. And the fifth part of the Consolidated District Improvement Plan is review and monitoring of the plan. And I wrote up a list of things for Andy and the staff to consider in terms of accountability and implementation and monitoring. And I know that those will be used. If you notice on the goals and the implementation strategies, you'll see a staff member's name next to them. And I think that brings really good accountability when that's done. Very few plans that I have seen have that component. And so I'm glad to see it in ours. Two purposes then, we are taking care of the October 31st requirement at the state level. And we are giving the district a really good, I think, comprehensive plan for decision making. I'd like to go to the focus group report. And you don't probably have that with you, but if you do, you can follow with me. And the focus group report again is not the strategic plan. This is what you got in December. But there's a question number two there that we need to focus on. And it says, looking forward to the next five years, what is one specific issue the district must prioritize for improvement? When we met with all the different groups, there were 13 of them, different interest groups around the community, we asked the same five questions. The one most important question in my opinion, and I know yours as well, is what is it that we need to improve? So under that question, I put together the things that were most prominently answered. And there were 28 different suggestions for improvement. And that's where this report, the strategic plan can be helpful. And then I said to our team that was working on putting the report together, let me go back through, there's tons and tons of data. But let me pull out what seemed to be not in priority order, the ones that came forward the most. And I just want to mention them to you tonight. So all the focus groups, all the information we got off of the website, all the suggestions coming forward as to what should be done. And the question was what is the one most important thing? Kind of come around these areas. And there's nothing new here that you haven't heard before. Build a new middle school. Take care of deferred maintenance. Create a long-term district facilities plan. Equity and learning opportunities for all schools. Increase curricular options such as world languages, career and technical education, science, technology, engineering, and math. Lower class sizes. Overcrowding, need for age equivalent furniture, classrooms are too small. And then a separate one. Unequal curricular offerings in some rural schools. Make music programs available to all district schools. And I've had an opportunity to read the report that came forward to you. So I'm knowledgeable about what's in that report if you want to ask me any questions. Increase mental health and counseling staff. Increase district safety and security measures. And consolidate schools and reconfigure grades district wide. So one of the things we know is for sure as leaders is we can't do everything that is asked for us in terms of improving our organization. But we can do some things. So as leaders, what are the some things that we should focus on? And we're given, say this five-year period. So they can be pretty significant challenging things that would not be accomplished in say a six-month period of time. And that is kind of where we go to the plan. And I'm gonna pass the, these have some of my scratchings on them. But I just want you to look at this summary that I just spoke from. Don't mind my notes on there. I would like to go to page number five on your strategic plan report. And on that particular page, and I showed you the wrong one. I want to go back over the input that has been received because I think it's really significant. I'm looking at this box on the side that Derrick so nicely put together for us. And I do want to reemphasize of the districts that I've worked with over the last eight years, this is the most data that has come forward in terms of work with a district planning team and also getting community input. We're looking at all of the focus group information out there. But the 26 committee members put in a total of 624 hours. If you add it up, each person's time from each meeting. And to you, that is saying that is our effort moving forward to help you in a written report to have prioritized recommendations for what we think are the most strategic and prioritized things that can be done. And this is coming from both analytic data, but also from discussion kind of data. So both hard, actual data and discussion. We started working with you in September of last year. And here we are in May. That's eight months, I believe. And much of the work that was done was done through the focus groups to start with and then monthly by the committee. With that information in mind, I'd like you to turn to page number seven. So you know, because it's been presented to you that on page seven, the core values came directly from information from the 13 focus groups and the information that was sent in through the district website. And the district emails that go out, newsletters. Information came back to the district electronically there. The individual 13 focus groups, it was kind of face to face and copying information down and getting written data. The mission statement came from the core values. The vision statement came from the core values and mission together. The tagline was something that we wanted to have just a few words to say a lot about what this overall district wants to be known for. And then finally, the strategic goals. And this is where I would like to focus our discussion tonight. So there are a number of organizations, private and public. Certainly a number of school districts that have a number of goals. I've seen them up to 10. And what I think to myself is they really don't have any goals. Because when you have too many goals, it's very, very difficult to accomplish things that are challenging. And we want these goals to be really challenging. They're five-year timelines. There's opportunity for you to move resources from things you're doing to these areas. There's also opportunities for you to stop doing some things that may not be as important as what is suggested here for your consideration. I have a definition I'd like to read to you. And it is specifically speaking to board members. Any kind of board member, on any kind of board. And it's called collective impact. Leaders abandon their individual agendas in favor of a collective approach to improving student success by focusing on a single set of goals and a shared vision of the future. Like to read that last phrase again. By focusing on a single set of goals and a shared vision of the future. And so it isn't that these three goals are the only things that you're gonna work on in the next five years. But coming from the committee with all the data that they have, it's their thinking that they're the most important, the most effective, and the most prioritized things to work on to move to the next higher level of effectiveness. And with that, before I go into the individual goals, I'd like to stop and answer any questions that you might have. And also our board member on the phone, any questions that you'd like to bring forward or comments.
Jerry, one of the questions
I don't have any at this time. Thank you.
So one of the questions I had for you is I'm looking at the little at-a-glance feature on the page five.
Yeah.
And it talks about 13 focus groups, 4,900 emails. So when I look at the information, is it saying that out of the 4,900 emails, asking, I'm sure, asking for a response? Did we only get 359 survey responses plus another 118 written out of that 4,900?
Yes, and Derrick is behind me and he conducted that. But that's my understanding there. So about 477 total.
Yeah, that's accurate. And I would say that that probably sounds really low. But the industry standard for education responses, according to the industry standard tool, is about 3% for education. And that's even just on open rate on emails. So the fact that we got that high of a response is actually pretty significant. It speaks to the engagement within our community.
We're gonna take that as a positive?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
And I can say Ron, from my experience, it would be. And Derrick, isn't it true that the 4,900, many of those go to individual families that don't have children in school as well?
Yeah, absolutely.
It's not just our parents.
Yeah, so if you look at our district website and all of our school websites, down in the footer, there's a sign up for our newsletter feature. And so we've been accumulating those email addresses for, what do you think Andy, five years?
Denise.
About. So we do at the beginning of every school year, load in all of the email addresses for current students, parents that we have. But then we also send out to community members who have just elected to receive those.
Okay. Well, thank you, appreciate it.
And Ron, I'd also say the 202 individuals that attended the focus groups around the community is a high number as well.
Okay. Nice. Do we have a question?
No. That I saw here. Other comments or questions before we go on to goals?
Jerry, I just wanted to say that I think you guys nailed it again this time. I know you did that, I felt you did that last time. I like the core values, the mission statement, the vision statement, the tagline. I like the goals too. But I just, I really, I really like what you guys came up with. I had a chance to look at this today. I like what you guys came up with. I really like, there's finally a definition of equity that I can understand.
Yeah. And that was such a big issue in almost all parts of all discussions that we did. Basically, the team here brought it up a great deal. Andy emphasized it and it was certainly out in the field. It's a bigger, bigger topic here in our community than it was five years ago.
Of course, yeah.
But that's also true regionally, statewide, and nationally.
Yeah, yeah, it's true everywhere.
Thank you.
No, I just really liked the whole thing.
Other comments or questions before we dive in a little harder into the three goals? Okay, so I wanted the group to have all of the data possible, all 28 suggestions, kind of boil down to 11 more solid ones. And then just open it up for their experience, their ideas, their discussions, the pros, the cons, and see where we went. And so deciding on the goals and actually how to word them took us longer than anything else in the group. And I think that's the way it should be. Because basically, that's what this report is about. And there's three items there. But they're big, general items. They're not specific. On the first one, the second one and the third one, I want you to notice that every one of the goal statements starts with the word "each." And that makes them extremely difficult to accomplish. That is setting the bar as high as we can set it. But it's an honest, a goodness heartfelt feeling, both from the community input and also definitely from the 26 member committee. And so we decided that every one of the goals we would come up with had to deal with all children. The first concept is for students to be making necessary progress each year. It doesn't say 100% graduation. It says that every student, every year, whether it's pre-K or the 12th grade, needs to be on track to graduate. So that means you're taking the right courses. You're moving at a growth level that makes sense to you. That your attendance is what it should be. The behavior is what it should be. And we are putting tracking tools in place through the use of more sophisticated technology, electronic portfolios, to gather that information every single time there's a data piece that needs to be added. That's a really hard goal. It's hard to pull off logistically. But it's even more difficult when you forget about the logistics and say now we're talking about every student. When we talk about every student, we're not talking about every student being able to make the same progress. We're talking about every student to make the growth that they should be able to make based on their background and history. A pretty big difference there. So on that particular one, I think what you will see coming forward, and it certainly won't be in the first year, an ability for parents to sit down and be able to look at attendance, academics, scheduling, portfolio, behavior, and see how my son and/or daughter are progressing at any time. And if we can get the technology tools in place, we should be able to call that up. Any individual teacher should be able to. And we should be able to present it quite easily. Much more common now than it used to be, the idea of an electronic portfolio or something similar moving forward. Showing whether at any given time, a student is on track to graduate, anytime we measure it. Questions on goal number one. Big concept. It's not specific.
I have a question at the bottom, the very last piece. This is annual data review with admin team focusing on growth targets and trend data. Are you able to describe that a little bit more?
Okay, and which page are you on? The next page, I see it, annual data review.
Oh, maybe, maybe you're gonna get to it. My bad. I was, I was looking at this page and you were looking at the page before.
Yeah, we're going over these, but I'd like to, I'd like to answer that question anyway. By the way, these indicators, performance indicators are how a goal is carried out. So the goal doesn't say how you do it. But the indicators indicate how we plan on accomplishing that. And that's what you will use as a word to measure the progress. It's how the performance indicators are doing. On that very last one, that indicator talks about each student will achieve their appropriate academic growth. Appropriate is the key word. It means what they're capable of, they should be at their capability. And so one of the strategies to help that take part is a review of the data with the administrative team focusing on is a review of the data with the administrative team focusing on that individual child within that school. And I could see that, an administrative and, and staff member team. But also at the bigger level, say at the district level, the administrative team looking at this particular goal and saying, with an annual review, how are we doing on meeting the individual growth targets of students? Say in grade five, all of grade five, how are we doing? So it would be a process to look at how we're making progress or not, being able to see if students are making individual growth that they're capable of. And Andy, turn it over to you. Anything that you'd want to add to that particular piece?
Yeah, I can give you an indicator from your last meeting. Mark Hannan, when he presented on Silvercrest School, actually shared with you and agreed that, specific to Silvercrest, what we do at each of the schools in the district, so we have district-wide data the same as well. That shows targeted interventions and the results that they have on the student learning growth goals. And so those tools are here. They're in place. We can be more effective in how they're used, but you did have a recent example of that, which I thought was very effective.
The only thing that concerns me on that is that it says "annual", and I just wonder if that's not soon enough. I, I know it's a lot of work, but if something needs to be changed, it seems like it would almost need to be semi-annual or, not quarterly, but...
I have the same response and just, I, I guess my question is, is, does that last line refer to building level, grade level, individual students? That's the question I have. And then the annual thing, to me, the continuous is, is a really great thing to have, but I just don't know what that, that last line means.
Andy, I want to take a guess at that one because I wasn't with the team when that idea came up. But it seems to me it's looking at the district level at least once a year, very comprehensively. How are we doing overall on students reaching their growth, their, their potential growth? But that, at the school level, this would be happening much more frequently, mainly with the classroom teacher.
Yes, you've summed it up well. And maybe we can clean up this language to give it a little bit more correction, more of my definition that I hear the two of you, Jennifer and Irv, talking about. But absolutely, in fact, if you take a look above, Strategies for Implementation, there's even a reference to school-level teams monitor data to identify at-risk students. It's really a very, very similar approach. The data teams that are working within each of the schools, at a minimum, they, they meet and review the data and monitor during every PLC, early release time. But most of our schools, frankly, all of our schools have a system set up. It looks a little different at our smaller schools than at larger schools, but have systems set up to do just that, a constant review and monitoring of school data so that they understand where every student is growing and where every student needs support to minimize their at-risk factors.
Yeah, that clears that up.
And I, and I'm sorry, one more thing, Irv, that the annual data review, just based upon that committee's conversation, that group's conversation, was really a reference to, to have the annual comparisons from year to year as well. So we can see how we, as a district, are, are growing. That was the intent of putting the angle in there.
And Jennifer, thank you for bringing that up because that, that is a key question and a good question. And I think maybe we'll look at some rewording on that to clarify. Anything else on, generally with goal number one?
So you're going to go through all of that, all of that? Thank you.
Okay, on to goal two. Again, notice "each" which puts a really, really high bar. Each student has social and emotional learning skills to navigate their world. We're talking about dealing with bullying, having caring adults for students to work with. We're talking about work ethic, community service, team orientation, citizenship, problem-solving skills. In the last two years, in working with focus groups especially, I've noticed that basic academic skills, which used to be in standards, which used to be where most of the discussion went, has moved now to this particular area of social and emotional well-being. The threats of suicide now have never been higher, especially with the middle school students and on up. The bullying is very, very difficult. And it seems to me more common than it was in the past, at least reports that I get from my student focus groups. And so this one in years past could have said, focus more on student academic achievement, especially reading and mathematics. And now we're seeing the shift. Senior citizens had a lot to say about things like students being successful after leaving high school and work ethic. A big, big issue to be mentioned. And the same thing is true with a lot of the parents in groups. And so this is a response to a shift. It's why you're seeing more mental health services being asked for, more counselors being asked for, more one-to-one caring adult kind of relationships within the school setting. And certainly, safety issues is in this category as well. So the group, in looking at information coming forward, felt that this needed to be one generalized, prioritized area for us to look at in the future. And the good news on this one is, we're starting to see a lot more federal and state money moving in this regard. And so there's a much greater chance to fund, say, things like counselors and mental health specialists than there was before. There's a little bit of a lag in the workforce of having qualified people to get in your candidate pools, but I believe that'll be coming. Comments about this one?
I'll have some comments when we get to the detail.
Okay. So one of, one of the labels people put on this are the soft skills with basic academic achievement being the hard skills. You'll, you'll hear more and more about that. And as you go to your state school board meetings, you're noticing that there are a lot more presentations on social, social, emotional health than there have been in the past, and I think we'll continue to see that. Anything else on goal two before we drop down to three? Okay. And again, notice "each" starts with the next one. Each school facility reflects the excellence of education in our district. We really spent a lot of time wording this one. It doesn't say build a new middle school. It doesn't say raise a bond for the community to take care of deferred maintenance. It talks about the quality that students deserve in the buildings that they're in in order to maximize their education. Doesn't say how to do it either. It is a desire for the future, something to be prioritized. Not anything new to you, but I think the wording is pretty unique. So we're talking about, of course, deferred maintenance. We're really talking about safety issues, big, big item in the field. We're talking about technology tools in place, grounds cleanliness, proper furniture, library facilities, nutrition facilities, those kinds of things, and long-range facility planning for the future. So we have three priorities. Students to be on track to graduate, social, emotional learning skills, and reflecting the facilities that the district should be known for in terms of the excellent education that you offer to students. Anything on that one before we go to the next page?
I'm really happy that number three made it on. I know it was difficult because that's not something that's generally in a strategic vision, but when you asked when you came the first time you visited us, that was my ask, and so I'm really pleased to see that. And, and thank you for all the, and everybody who served on the group for spending so much time with me.
Thank you very much. Any comments from on the phone?
No, I don't have any. Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome. All right, let's move to the next page. And I worked with the group on indicators. I didn't work as much with the strategies, and so questions there I can get help with. But remember, our goals are written in a general way. It doesn't say how to do them, but these indicators do talk about how to do them. And instead of having eight or nine indicators, everything you could do to accomplish the number one goal, we use the same logic. We said, what are the three most important things we can do that can have the greatest impact to accomplish that goal? Remembering that we have a five-year period of time. And this particular plan is written so that there's five plans. There's a plan for the first year, the second year, the third year, the fourth year, and the fifth year. So we have the same goals, but we may change our strategies and indicators as we work with them in time based on differences that come forward. This is our, this is our first-year plan for the five-year strategic plan. Indicator one, indicator one A, indicator one B, and indicator one C are the three areas that the group came up with on how they best felt we could reach goal number one. And the first indicator talks about a kind of a barrier that we know indicates whether students are going to graduate or not. If we can get freshmen to pass a hundred percent of the courses that they take in that ninth grade year, the odds are extremely high that they will graduate and they'll stay on track. The odds really go down. Do we have a seven-credit or six-credit requirement in the freshman year? They take seven classes?
They take seven classes, yes.
Okay. And are we looking on this one at seven credits or six?
With, really, we were discussing, as much as anything, all of the credits because there was a conversation around the core credits and the elective credits both. So yes, combined, seven credits.
Okay, so we're talking about, my freshman son has seven classes, and the expectation is, in order for him to be on track to graduate, he not only has to pass his core classes, he's got to pass all of his electors as well. And so that's, that's what we're presenting as one of the ways on getting students to stay on track to graduate. Now, this is a high school one. It doesn't talk about the middle school or elementary school. But the research is so powerful around it that as one of the three areas we're really going to work on, we selected that one. On indicator two, right now, the state of Oregon is in a sad situation with student attendance. And we rank very low nationally with student attendance. We have, depending on the district, from about a hundred and sixty-five to a hundred and seventy-five school days. We're talking about students not missing more than nine days of school because we know when it goes into the chronic absenteeism, which is ten or more school days, we see the graduation rates really go down. And where does it start? It starts in kindergarten. You can make, unfortunately, some long-term projections on graduation based on students' kindergarten attendance. We're monitoring it and wanting to monitor it all the way through. The research tells us this is a crucial item. I really like seeing people's names behind each one of these indicators because Andy is the person who's heading up this goal. And his team is made up of these three people. And these three people have some other people working with them. But it brings out that accountability. So when you're being presented the progress on goal one, my expectation would be, Andy would give you some information, and then each one of these individuals would be talking about how we're doing in those indicators. The indicator one C, each student will achieve their appropriate academic growth. And again, this was that idea that not every student can accomplish the same amount of information in a given time. But we do have expectations for every student to reach what their potential is. And that is a very, very difficult, but I think important, sophisticated point on what we're trying to say here. It's academic growth based on the individual. What should we expect that individual to do in the second grade in mathematics, reading, and writing? And then you see strategies underneath each indicator on how to carry the indicators out. With that, I'll see if there are any questions from you. And again, Andy, if there's any, anything you'd like to mention.
One of the things that stood out to me with this one in particular was, it seems pretty heavily focused on, say, the ten to fifteen percent of students who are at risk in some way for either graduation or, you know, graduation attendance tend to be tied, so those are sort of tied. And even under appropriate academic growth, it really seems to emphasize at-risk, or not-on-track students. I mean, a student could be not achieving their appropriate academic growth because they're advanced and are being basically held back because the class is forced to stay back to keep everybody else that's at risk on track, right? So I just wanted to, you know, I didn't sit in these meetings, right? I didn't participate during that process. So I don't know if that was really the mindset that you guys had while sort of fleshing out this goal? Was it really specifically those at risk of ten to fifteen percent, or was it broader than that?
I might say to you, yeah, it's that ten to fifteen percent, but because we have "each" in front of the goal, it means talented and gifted as well as those with disabilities, et cetera. So if we have a talented and gifted student that is not measuring up to their potential, if this is to work the way the words say it's supposed to, then that student should be held accountable as well. And I, I really can say to you that that concept was debated pretty heavily within the group and helped us try to phrase the goal in such a way that we were trying to encompass all students.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I got out of this, Jerry, is that it's almost equity in how you pursue this on each of their performance, whether they're at risk or they're tagged. So I appreciate that.
And we had a lot of requests for more talented and gifted services. I mean, that, that is an area that, from the field, there is a feeling that the district can make improvements. Now, what you know is, the state law says that talented and gifted students need to be taught at the rate and the pace that their potential shows, but there is no money to help with that. Whereas students who are special education students get twice the amount of money so that we can help with extra services. And students who are English-language learners get one full amount of money and then a half. So they get 1.5 of the money coming forward, but not with talented and gifted. So that's where we have to figure out what we can do to have a greater impact. And I would say there is a need in the district for that.
I have a question. I have a question. And I didn't, this, I don't want to put Amy on the spot, I don't want to put you on the spot, but is that a concern? I mean, I'm a talented and gifted specialist and I don't even know this for my own students because we just shift, shifted to this idea of growth, right? Are talented and gifted students having a hard time making that growth?
The short answer is yes. And it's something that we recognize and it's something that we recognize needs to occur partially for the reasons that Jerry has just shared. I mean, the resources are not there like they are with our other populations of students. At the same time, it's, I think it's also important for us to be certain that we place our teachers in the right position to be able to accommodate the needs of our talented and gifted students, which is ongoing. The talented and gifted conversation actually came up a number of times and it's actually been central to a couple of themes that we've had this year. Even at the beginning of the year, district-wide in-service was especially focused on the equitable support of that talented, gifted students across the school district. Jennifer Henn did an incredible job at the in-service and she's put on additional staff-specific training throughout the year. But it's also been part of staff conversations and also been part of administrative conversations and moving ahead. And one thing that we recognize as well is that there is a, there's a direct connection for, with our, really with multiple subgroups of students, but our talented and gifted students, we really do note the high-risk nature of our talented and gifted students and that they do need additional differentiated support and really more prevalent now than what we've seen, let's say, over the past 10 years. Even five, for sure, certainty are some social-emotional connections that are, are really essential, especially for our talented and gifted students in order for them to thrive. I, I want to just make a brief comment, going back to Irv's mention of equity as well because what the group did is the group continued to remind itself of the importance of each student and the importance of equitable support for each, each student. We continue to go back to that core value as we not only develop the goals, but as we develop the performance indicators and the conversations around how to support each student. And Jonathan, you're spot on. I mean, sure, 15% of our kids are going to take probably the predominant resources in order for them to help them be successful. But we also discuss that that's the right thing to do because if we're going to really meet, meet the threshold of each student being on track to graduate, then we surely have to focus on the kids that are highest at-risk and especially those kids that maybe are not so commonly thought of as being at-risk and high-risk kids, including our talented and gifted kids.
That was a comment that I also was going to make, that talented and gifted kids doesn't, that doesn't equal high performance. Those are not necessarily synonymous. I agree with that priority. I think that this is the first time really, well, in my career, that we have to, we've measured growth for everybody and that the first time that the kids who do achieve at high levels, that their growth is also matters in accountability. So I think that's a good thing because there, it's the first time we're really, we've really looked at that.
You think which is a good thing?
That, that, that high-performing kids are expected to grow as well. And so that's never, that's never been the case. We've only, we've had this bar and if you hit this bar, you know, the people who are achieving higher than that, it doesn't really matter. But now we're looking at growth for everybody, so.
I was just commenting that that, it doesn't mention that anywhere here. It talks specifically about at-risk and not-on-track students.
Because I think it's a priority. Like, and I, I can support that as a priority, even though the other is definitely something that matters to me as well.
But I think Jonathan, what Jerry reminded us at the beginning of the meeting that each student, and that word each really encompasses everybody. So that's how I took that up, even though you know behind, that's what's going to take most of the resources.
Right, no, I, I, I'm, I'm not really debating each student piece at all. I was specifically talking about indicator one C, but it was just, you know. The indicator talks about each student and then all the strategies don't talk about anything but at-risk. So I was just, that was really my only point.
Yeah.
But we should expect to see the data for everyone.
That, that's my point, right.
And Jonathan, I think Andy will take that under advisement. This meeting is to finalize this report, so there isn't any reason why we can't add something a little bit more specifically around those students.
Well, maybe just, you know, I'm open to other people's ideas on that. That was just what struck me when I wrote this.
No, but, but it's a, it's a great point. And I personally, having heard you say that in the discussion and remembering how we debated it in the team, I think there is room for us to add something there.
Thank you.
Tim, I'm looking at my little clock and I know I'm going overtime, but is it okay?
Yes, you're fine.
It is okay.
You're fine.
I don't want, I don't want to overstay my welcome.
What, is that how we all feel, Tim?
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Okay, that makes me a little more comfortable.
No, we have plenty of time.
So before we move off of the indicators and strategies under goal one, any other comments?
I just have one comment to make from Mr. Coloma.
Yes.
I just wanted to thank you for the language that you just used as far as the indicator one C. And addressing Jonathan's questions about each student will achieve their appropriate academic growth and looking at the language again just a little bit to see if, you know, the indicators could be changed or that one indicator could have a language change. But I appreciate you, I appreciate you addressing that and potentially looking at that again. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Shelley. And that's the reason why we tried to come back to you at different times during the process to say, okay, here are, are, are core values. How do they look? Here's the mission statement and so forth. And so as we meet tonight, this plan is not finalized. It's open for your input. And the more you give us, the better I think all of us will feel about the ownership that you have for us in comparison to saying, okay, it all looks good. And now what's the next agenda item? So I really, I appreciate, I know Andy does, the team does, and the board does when you question us and come up with your own thoughts on this.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You have a comment on that?
Yeah, so I'll ask the question, but this might be maybe more appropriate for Andy or Derek.
Okay.
So I noticed that you said you focus more or less on the indicators, but not necessarily the, the strategies for the implementation. So when we're looking at goal number one, each student is on track to graduate and then you mentioned that it would be nice to have an electronic portfolio with real-time performance indicators. Knowing how difficult sometimes it is to have a master database where we get all access, the time it takes and the cost involved, is that actually a realistic goal within the point of five years to accomplish that?
Well, I have a question that gets at that in a little different, what, comment? Gets at it a little different way, Ron. And then I want Andy certainly to respond and Derek as well. One thing that I said to the committee, don't deal with money for resources. It's the best way that we can ruin creative thinking and good ideas. And what comes up is, well, we'll never have the money to do that. And my answer, or maybe the way to do that, my answer is, well, if it's a five-year priority and we've decided it's one of the three most important things we can do to improve, then it's our fault if we're not able to make this happen because we've decided not to stop doing some things that aren't as important. And we've also decided not to give the resources for those who are implementing and the tools in order to make it happen. So I see a really big part of this plan being dependent on how your budget committee meetings go in the next five years. And things that you decide to stop doing so you can harvest resources and move them to what you have prioritized. And I think probably I need to apologize about the idea of the electronic portfolio. It's something that I think is so powerful and I've seen it in place and it is expensive. But if you really want to track individual student achievement, behavior, attendance, goals, et cetera, we have to move into the electronic age and put that data so you can get it instantly and add to it instantly. It isn't listed as one of these things. And I think I maybe was out of step here in mentioning this.
No, no, I don't disagree with the, with the goal at all.
No, no, I know, I know you don't, but it isn't, but it isn't actually listed here and where.
And what I can tell you as well, just to complement that, Jerry, thank you for teeing that up, is that the, the individual tracking of students from an academic attendance, social-emotional learning standpoint, the gains have been phenomenal over the past few years. We now have, and Derek can chime into some of this, but we now have actually a couple of things happening. One of them are common approaches and common language so that when you have one platform provider speaking with another, whatever it may be, whatever data you're tracking, they actually speak with each other. But that hasn't been the case in the past. Similarly, the Department of Education, I think, has said it as the best job that they have ever done historically to be able to collect the data and allow school districts and their, and their, their mining vendors, you know, the vendors that come in and, and to be able to retrieve that data in real time. I'll give you an example. It's not data-specific for students, but we're using a program called Forecast Five. And Forecast Five was presented at the OSB convention last November. Some of you may have observed that. But that's an expansive dashboard that not only helps address financial things, you've seen some spreadsheets from Steve Nielsen from Forecast Five, but it allows the same kind of sort of drill-down, real-time technology for student-by-student performance that you can compare over time. It's phenomenal. And we're only going to better places with our, our ability to track that now. Anyway, we're using Forecast Five, we're using STAR, we're using our dashboard from the Willamette ESD. All three of those allow for individual tracking, monitoring, and growth of students.
Derek, did you go?
Yeah, I can kind of add to that. So prior to this year, I think several of you know that this is my first year of full-time communications with the district. And prior to this year, I was the data and assessment person for like 12 years. And I can tell you that when I came on, we were using three-by-five note cards. And now we, we did, we moved to the Willamette ESD data suite last summer and we, the capabilities that we have now, the world that Jerry's describing is the world we were in two years ago. We are very quickly moving past even, and as a matter of fact, the issue is not, does the tool exist, but can we keep up with the tool? And do we even have the right questions that we're asking yet? Because so many analytic tools do exist now with, you know, again, as many of you know, we're kind of out in the business world, big data is a thing. A lot of these tools now have become very inexpensive for education. And so while we are paying for a lot of tools, there are also tools that we're utilizing that we're able to kind of pull some of this data down and then be able to generate reports where we're going. We didn't even know that we needed to ask this question yet necessarily. So, and that's been a, a pretty amazing change just in the time that I've been here. So I would say that when you look at what our district's doing, when we get out into the community of kind of educators around and we show what tools we've generated, I was in a meeting at Willamette ESD where we present our high school success plan. The other school districts kind of look and go, how are you even generating this? And it's because we've really put focus on that in this district for a long time. So we're really in a pretty good place.
So we have moved off of the papyrus to the hominid material.
That's exactly right. Yes, we're well into the apicus era.
I don't know what he's just said.
And so Andy, maybe this is another area where we look at a little bit more wording towards that concept that both of you were talking about. Thank you very much for that, Ron. Anything else on number one before we move on to the next set of indicators? Okay, let's go. So each student has the social and emotional learning skills to navigate their world and we have school communities that are inclusive and free of bullying and intimidation. A big item with LBTQ students willing to come forward and mention it within group settings, mixed group settings, I think is showing the need. Safety issues here certainly are not so much around facilities, but personal feelings of adequacy, being respected, being cared for. I'm working with the Sisters School District now on outside committee from the district, working on suicide prevention. Five years ago, I wouldn't have thought that that would be where some of my work would take me. There is a tenderness within our student body, I think all the way from pre-K up to high school, that really needs attention. That maybe it was this grade in the past and it just didn't come forward, but it's so prevalent now. And so this particular goal is really one that is showing up more, but I don't think we have all the wherewithal on how to do it. But we're learning. And again, this is an area where there is more money coming forward to help us. So one indicator talks about bullying and intimidation. The next one, students experience positive connections with caring adults. By dolly, if there's just one, just one caring adult that a student in need feels is there for them when they need to seek their help, research again shows us it makes a tremendous difference. The advisor-advisee program that would have more depth to it is certainly one of the ways that I'm seeing these carried out. And our extracurricular activities, our drama programs, a lot of those extracurricular items are where these people are found and they make a great difference in students' lives. And then students take an active role in their school and community. A lot more talk about students' citizenship and giving back, not just being takers, but also being givers and learning it at a really early age. We don't have to wait until high school to have community service components. Elementary school children, kindergarten children can do things towards their community that can start at an early age to show them what it's like to be a citizen and to be giving back and, and the good feelings to come from that. And then students provide input on the outcomes of their 14-year experience. We don't do a very good job as an organization, public schools, about our product. We have students for a long period of time. They leave the door, they get their diploma. And we aren't like a good private sector business that checks with the people who they provide service for to get input and see how it has gone and how we can improve from it. Exit interviews, inviting graduates and non-graduates back one year later, staying in contact with them, seeing how they're doing, asking for their input. So one of our ideas on this really difficult social-emotional learning skills was to be able to get more data. And there are companies that are doing that, that we could investigate. I think, Andy, you've, you've done some things with life. Is it called Life Track?
Yes.
And there's, but I think we're looking for a deeper level. And so this is one that, you can see, we don't have a whole lot of ideas under it now, but we do understand its importance. So with that, I'd like to open it up to any comments you have under goal number two for performance indicators.
Jerry, I really appreciate your ideas of citizenship at any age because I believe that any person, no matter what their age, can contribute to their community, their families. And I like the idea of input from graduates. I also like the idea, it's mentioned here, of input from our, our students. And that, to me, is really important. One of the things I One of the things I noticed that in this section, we're hitting social emotional learning really hard. And I'm really glad to see that because we're investing in this new curriculum and this new initiative. And the accountability piece is important to me as a board member that we want to see how effective that that is for our our schools. The one thing that I wonder about is the idea of school climate because it's my understanding that climate and social emotional learning really overlap. Like you can't do one without the other. And so I'm thinking that like the core value of safety, safe welcoming, inclusive schools, kind of, you know, embodies that idea of climate. But it's not explicit, and I don't know if it needs to be. I just wanted to to throw that wondering out there, especially under indicator two A. It seems like those things that are described, you know, kind of hit on climate a bit. But I just would hate for us to, the indicators to be so heavy on the social emotional and that we don't pay attention to that other piece because they work in tandem, I guess, is my is my point.
Jennifer, I would agree with you, and I think there's room here for Andy and the team to consider mentioning school climate surveys or something similar on some kind of a regular basis that gives more and deeper insight to, say, indicator two A. And there there are some good tools out there for that. Andy, I don't know, we may actually be doing some of that already.
Hit and miss, yeah, hit and miss. With our eighth and 11th graders, we do that with the Oregon Healthy Teens Survey. But it's hit and miss otherwise, but I agree, it's a great suggestion.
Yeah, so it'd be nice if we consolidate that. And one other thing that I wanted to mention, I do see the idea of community partnerships on this goal. One of the things, when we talk about equity, is is reaching out to families and getting their input about things as well. And this is something that, as an educator, is not my forte at all. But all the things that I read say that you got to have partnerships with families in order to get really equitable outcomes because you don't know what the barriers are until you start talking to families. And so I don't know if that belongs in this area or not, or if it's worth considering, but I just wanted to throw that out there about the idea of community and family partnerships. Like I don't think that necessarily fits where it where it is here, but but I'm just throwing that out there as an idea.
And and we'll take that under advisement, certainly. One of the things we struggle with is getting the voices of the people who are never at tables like this to help guide us in our decision making. It is so difficult, and we miss those voices that have experience that the rest of us can't speak to. I want to give one example and a little bit of a pat on the back of going the extra mile. Working a few years back with Mount Angel on the focus group process, talking about single parent Hispanic women who did not speak English and could not assist with their students' education. How do we get that voice? And so the superintendent found one of the large, large agricultural interests in the area. And if I knew the name of it and said it to you, you'd know who it is. But anyway, the head of that organization said, why don't you come out to the farm and I will release our Hispanic women to spend time with the focus group. You bring interpreters and we'll ask questions. And so we did, we met in one of the farm buildings out on the farm. And the passion that those women had about their hopes for their children and their inability to communicate because they said, the only thing that we know is what our kids tell us, and we know that they're not always telling us the truth. And so sometimes it takes those kinds of extra efforts to really do this work properly. Sorry to give us off track.
Just a minute, Derek had a comment. I know I normally don't have audience, but these guys are on the committee, so.
Yeah, just to address, Jennifer, your question about the use of the word climate. We discussed that pretty extensively and ultimately decided not to include specifically the word climate. And the reason was, in an attempt to be more inclusive in terms of an understanding of all readers who maybe aren't with the education leggo. And so you're absolutely right that that's a concept that we were trying to hit here without necessarily specifically saying the education climate and the school climate. There was some concern that if we said the school climate, people might think we were talking about
Rain, yeah.
Or facility air conditioning, right?
Oh. And that's fine. I think for me, as a board member, I just want to know what the accountability piece is and to make sure that there is an accountability piece in that area. But I totally get it because I went in thinking about my comments today. I was like, well, does everybody get to know what climate is? Like I don't even, I can't even define it super well, but I totally respect that.
Anything else on goal two?
Yeah, well, I guess I do. So, you know, I think everything written there is fantastic. I mean, it's it's a great list of of ideas and goals and strategies. One of the questions I have, though, is if we were going to look back a year or two years, three years later and try to measure it, at least half of these aren't really measurable. They're subjective, they're abstract. And I'm just curious if that should matter to us. I'm sort of new to this process. It seems like goals should be measurable. Please feel that, and I wonder if you guys discussed that.
We think we're trading on some new ground in terms of accountability. It's a little bit easier to talk about what we'd like to have than it is to consider how you measure growth in emotional and social learning skills. So I think Andy and the committee made a really smart move. And that was, in this first year, we are not going to have measures in place. We're going to try to figure those out as we go and also try to get the right benchmarks for a starting point. So this time next year, what my hope would be, that this presentation would be in the second year, and we would have had some time to figure out what the benchmarks are that we want as our starting point and what are some of the things that we found from the districts, from the literature, et cetera, that we can use for measuring points. There's so much emphasis on this right now that I know the field has some good ideas that I'm not aware of that we could put in place. But I I very much appreciate Andy's approach to taking this first year to really figure out what those areas are that we need for measures. And then I want to say one other thing that we haven't brought up yet. If this document isn't changed from year to year, then it's not evolving, it's not alive. And so as each year goes on, my hope would be that he would be making changes and adjustments. And then you really don't have to go through this process again because you go from year to year, evolving the document as it should be. And there's no stop at the end of five years, and then we start the focus groups and all this again. So you should have, my hope would be, these kind of discussions, at least annually, and bringing up new and different ideas in terms of strategies and so forth. And maybe even things change so much, you would decide to add a goal or drop a goal. But that's how it stays in the evolving. Most districts, and I'm going to say 90%, and I'm not being critical, I'm just reporting from the field, they do this, and it never changes the entire life of the document, which means to me, it's not being used. If it isn't updated and if it isn't living, it's really, we did the work, it's on the shelf, and we'll just do day to day management and not focus on the priorities.
So what kind of time and frequency commitment do you think the board should have in contributing to the updates?
Okay, there's two answers I have. First of all, in considering what kind of progress we're making, I'd like to see at least maybe every four months, there would be a progress report on how the district is doing. And at least annually, this kind of a meeting going over the entire document. And so next year's meeting would be putting the second year in place. So about this time next year would be the right time to do what we're doing here tonight.
Kind of like a work session, like another meeting like this to talk about changes.
And then in between, you're getting updated reports on how the performance indicators are progressing.
Which we have the last five years.
Yeah, so you've got that system in place already.
Did the last vision evolve or did it stay pretty much that?
It evolved as we will.
Yeah. The measures actually changed, Jonathan, and that's that's part of this approach was based slightly on experience because we did discover that if we set the the measures for the indicators so tight from the get go without really giving ourselves even, let's say, a year worth of time to identify those, that we were going to change them anyway because that's what we did, the measures were actually changed. However, I really appreciate your question. What I will share with you is that in the case of each of these indicators, we as a group identified at least one measure for every indicator. So we already have them in our mind.
Okay, they're not here, but you.
They're not here. We have, we crafted them with the intent of having a metric to be able to report to the board and the community.
Thank you.
And these things are, they are going to be fairly easily easily measurable. I mean, we've already seen that in our schools, just like I take Mark Twain, for instance. A year ago, they were having a terrible time with behavior and referrals, and they made some changes up there, and those both have come down a whole lot. So so I mean, there are going to be ways to measure, but I like what they're doing and taking a little more time to figure out how to do that.
You know, I do want to comment that it just seems like every year we hear about the social and emotional piece and how our educators and our administrators are actually becoming a larger extension of the family. You know, we're having to take some of the parental roles at home that might occur in the household.
Yes.
And the school system is really taking that on, and that's a tough piece.
Yes.
And so I commend the group. I think this is a extremely important piece of success. And I think that we need to focus on this and to continue to strive and just get better and work with those methods by which we can find some tangible results. But, you know, as Tim mentioned, and Greg mentioned, at Mark Twain, we've seen results from, you know, year one to year two where they implemented additional counselors. So I think it's fantastic. And and I really want to just commend, you know, our point of contact, the fact that we have Jennifer Hammond, Leslie Roach, Mark Hammond, Jamie McCarty and Woody Block have put themselves as a point of contact here. I just want to give them some recognition. Appreciate you for that.
And Ron, I want to say that as time has evolved, and I know you know this, the public schools have been asked to solve society's ills. That we are not just a place, unfortunately, where students come to learn basic skills, but we are being asked to be both parent and teachers to a number of families and children. And it's a horrific burden to be able to pull off. And I think it's one of the reasons why public schools, when you measure them against private schools who or and some charter schools who don't give equal access, they determine who comes, and then we're measured against the public schools that say, give me, you're tired, you're weak, you're ill, come on in, the doors are open. And in many of those situations, that piece of being the family for the student becomes extremely difficult with all else we have. But if we don't do it, who else will for those children? And that's why each of you, and I said this to you in our very first meeting in September, you hold such an important role in the community. Because when you think about it, there is no other institution that has as much influence on children and young adults' potential for the future as a community, as public schools. So for each of you to have the role you have, to put the interest and effort into it, to me, is a very high level of functioning, and it's greatly appreciated. Let's go to goal number three. So five years ago, when I worked with you, facilities were, was the number one issue. I would say that it still is, and I also understand how difficult it is to deal with. We think we put together some ideas that can really move us forward over a five year period of time. Again, this is an area where at the state level, there are more resources coming forward. And so the wording, again, I really appreciate the wording in the goal. It is no offensive, it doesn't talk about money or how it's done. It talks about the pride in the overall district and what we'd like to make available to our students. So number one, Long Range Facilities Committee will develop a facility management plan for more consideration. Andy, I know that's already going, what month would that be delivered to the board?
The Facilities Plan, well, the assessment is completed, the physical assessment. And the plan was just established by the board a week ago. And so they'll be convening soon and meeting throughout the the next school.
Okay, so we're in really good shape on that indicator. Okay. Indicator B, community members are engaged and aware of facility issues. Derek, could you speak a little bit about that one and what you foresee happening?
Yeah, one of the big things we talked about with that indicator is our need, sort of as was discussed earlier, not just sending emails and phone calls, although we feel like we do a very good job of that now, but also just going out and being in the community and offering opportunities to really be kind of putting things in people's hands, so to speak, having open houses and and just increasing our overall level of community engagement. I would say that when you look at the level of engagement in our community, we are a high performing community in that regard already. But some of the comments that we've had regarding facilities specifically have revealed that we do have a large portion of our community who aren't aware of just a lot of the reasons for some of the decisions that are made surrounding specific facilities. I'll give an example for when Jerry and I were up at the the Senior Center for the Focus Group. There was a lady there who shared that she, she said, oh, I'm so glad someone decided to do something about that Eugene Field. I was on the committee that talked about that 40 years ago. And she, and so, but we also got a lot of comments from some of those members of our committee who don't have students in the district anymore, who said, I guess I don't understand what I'm paying for on my property taxes. I don't understand specifically what's happening because I I don't go to events. I don't do those sorts of things. So those are some of the things that we'd like to target with this outreach specifically is just, you know, allowing our entire community, not all of our communities, you know, not just in Silverton and Scotts Mills, but our outline communities that we serve, to be able to, you know, talk with knowledge about their own building and the buildings throughout the rest of the district.
Indicator three C, school facilities are healthy, safe and accessible. So this is where that facilities plan, prioritized facilities plan, that comes to you where you make a decision about which items you want to work with. And the way I like to talk about that is, we can't do everything, but we can do some things. The some things we can do, let's make sure we pick the right ones that are the most prioritized. So we have 13 schools and a number of other facilities around the district. Let's take a look at that prioritized list, figure how deep down we can go and figure out how we can do it. We've got a five year period of time. We don't need to raise all the money by this time next. We don't need to raise all the money by this time next year. There's a number of granting sources and so forth that we can take a look at. And so this one, I think, really needs to have a lot of work this time around. This particular goal, I think the community, I'm only talking from my prejudiced point of view, but I think the community has waited and waited and waited. And now it's time for the board to look at the priorities, decide why, determine why you've chosen what you've done, how you're going to do it, and then move forward. And I think there's a lot of energy in the community that can assist this time around. Take a huge ask, a great leap, but it would be a legacy for this board. And remember, we're doing some things right now that are not as important, that we're putting money into as compared to this. We have to have the courage to take money away from things we're doing and move in this direction. So anything else on goal number three that you'd like to mention? And Shelley, any comments that you have we're interested in?
No, I'm just listening tonight, but thank you so much. If I have any questions, I'll get in touch and contact with those proper people. So thank you very much for asking.
Sounds good.
Jerry, thank you for your comments at the end there about the, about the need for the facilities and more conversation about that. I do agree with you, I think the community's ready for a change. I don't think, you know, when we went for the last bond, they obviously weren't. And I think it's taken some of the stuff that's happened that hasn't been ideal, like the placement of a middle school over here, and I think it's taken some of those things that our staff has rallied and made the best of, you know, for the benefit of kids, but they're not ideal. And I think people are realizing that. And so I'm hoping that this time, this next time around, you know, once we get a committee done, committee done and recommendations, I'm hoping that by the time we go out for another bond or whatever it's going to take, I'm hoping that energy will continue. But I think there's a lot of, a lot more positive energy behind that right now.
So many good feelings about the district. They certainly outweigh the negatives, and I believe that there's some untapped energy out there for us. And again, we have a good amount of time to put together a really good plan. Maybe if we only take the very first priority on the list and decide that's going to be the one, this is going to be the facility goal, this is the one we're going to go after, and we put emphasis and energy and we take our time, and we really do a comprehensive job, I think it can be very positive about that. Well, Andy and Debbie and the folks behind me, each of the school board members, I so appreciate you allowing an hour and a half to talk about this. It makes me feel good. When I drive home, I'm going to feel like they were so nice to go through this and ask questions and make changes and really be on task. You're like an excellent class of students who've stayed on task with the teacher the full-time, asked meaningful questions, no discipline problems. Thank you for allowing me to serve you over these five years. It's really been a pleasure.
Thank you, Jerry.
Yeah, Jerry, once again, thank you so much for the time you've put into this and both the last go-around and this go-around. There's been good results coming from your work, so thank you very much. It's greatly appreciated. So next steps with this, Andy, there's, I know there were some suggestions tonight. Were you going to...
Yeah, we'll craft some language over with Derek, and I'll probably contact Jerry as well, and we'll craft some potential modifications too, especially to the performance indicators and the strategies, and we'll have those prepared for you and sent to the board as soon as possible. So it'll be a discussion item again at your June regular session for you to continue to discuss. And it'll be up to you as a board when you find it satisfactory enough to take action, to approve it.
What do you guys want to do? Do you want to wait and have a discussion item again at our June meeting and then decide on when to approve it, or what are your feelings?
I think time for public input is important.
Yes, I would agree with that. In fact, I would almost suggest we have it as a discussion item at our June regular session, and time for public input then, and then possibly do an approval in July.
July, and new board members.
With new board members.
I think...
And then, I mean, I mean, there might be a need to do a little more discussion with new board members coming on, too.
Yeah, because they're, they're going to be part of the accountability process.
Okay. 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 And our next discussion item, summer work session, board member training, dates and topics for consideration. Normally in August, we usually have an extended work session or two work sessions where we get some training from OSBA. We do, we usually do it every year with different topics. On this one, with new board members coming on, I would think it'd be important to have some kind of new board member training or some things like we've had in the past. Other ideas, or I feel like I really can't say much on this one.
What do you want to see?
I want to see you guys learn, huh?
I certainly support the idea of being new and getting value from it last August, which was, I think, my first meeting. So yeah, I certainly support the idea. I don't know about the topic specifically.
Did we want to do another board self-evaluation again, or is that not appropriate because we're going to be a new board?
Yeah, that, I don't think that's probably appropriate at that time with the new board members. We should wait on that.
What, should it be in every other year's time?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
Me, too.
While two of you are going off, part of the reason that this agenda item is here is because, especially if you tap into OSBA, they get booked up pretty quickly. And I think the sooner that I can contact, Debbie can contact OSBA and say, we'd like someone for this date or these dates, and the board is leaning toward this topic. Again, understanding there'll be new board members, but at the same time, I think it would be helpful for any new board members to also have a date set. And you, each one of you have been new board members, and you've had the training related to roles and responsibilities, that's a default or standard training that Renee and others do a nice job with. If you believe it's necessary to have that, I can secure a topic as specific as that. Otherwise, we can at least pick a couple of dates, and I can put it on the radar of OSBA with two or three topics if they're, and see if they could at least be prepared to come out and present something to you. So if you wouldn't mind looking at your August calendar, that'd be really, really helpful for you. Jennifer, you're on that.
I'm pretty open, except for Thursday, or the first through the fourth. Other than that, I'm pretty open.
Shelley, do you have any preferences as far as dates or topics? Topics can be discussed.
No, no, I, my August schedule is pretty open. And I think just, you know, having an OSBA person come for regular, you know, training session would be fine. It might be ideal to also have maybe a policy person come as well, just to, you know, explain, you know, how we use our policies in our district, or, you know, if anybody has any questions, or I'm just throwing that idea out there, that way we kind of have not only roles and responsibilities, but, you know, we do set policy in our district.
Overlap it a little bit, maybe?
Sure, yeah, just an idea.
Would you guys prefer to have, I know in the past, sometimes we've done one long session, like a six-hour meeting or something like that. After, would you prefer to break it down into two evening, evening sessions, like three hours, you know, five to eight or whatever, six to nine?
Yeah, that'd be my preference. I'm not...
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I'm not up for a six-hour meeting. I've checked out. I mean, that's just...
Six one-hour meetings?
Yeah. Yeah.
I think the shorter is...
Yeah, shorter is better.
In my, in my, in my opinion, the shorter ones have always been more productive.
Yeah.
So like two, two, two days or something, maybe, in August?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
I'll throw in a couple of options.
I think that would be great.
Okay.
You have a regular session on August 12th, which is a regular board meeting. And if we follow the model that you used last year, I think you've done it a couple years in a row, you actually canceled your work session that month in August, and that's on August 26th, which is also the Monday of in-service week. So that'd make quite a long day. We could surely do it, but in the past, you've split that, let's say, a three-hour training the Tuesday or Wednesday or Thursday before the 20th, 21st, 22nd. And then something again, let's say, on the 27th or 28th, again, two three-hour settings, three, three-and-a-half hour settings, dinner provided.
Sounds good to me. I'd love to have Renee again. I think it's good to have continuity. She knows us a little bit.
She'll appreciate hearing that as well, I'm sure.
So what were the dates, Andy?
I'm suggesting the 20th, it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, 20th, 21st, or 22nd.
I'm fine with any of those.
And we could do twice, two evenings in one week if you like, that wouldn't be a problem. Or we could split that week and the next week. Jennifer, I need to do that.
If we do the two, it's got, can we please do it the 19th through 23rd, not the 26th? That would be my preference, I might die.
Okay. So let me see if I can, well...
That's my first week of school, yes.
Yeah, that's very busy for you.
Maybe like the Monday and Wednesday or something like that?
Okay.
I mean, I'm not going to be here, so I shouldn't say anything. I'm sorry. Shelley, do you have any preferences?
I'm actually really flexible. I, I am. So whatever my colleagues would like to do, what works best for them, would be just fine with me. So, yeah.
Okay.
I can do my best to be there whenever. I don't have any, I just look, I don't have anything specifically, so.
Okay. Well, Andy, why don't you just maybe work with OSBA and see what day Renee's available and whoever else, and just go from there?
And maybe topics can be just flexible at this point, because we might have new board members going to the training event and getting that roles and responsibilities there, so.
At the summer session?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. So just to confirm, I'm looking at the August 19th through the 22nd, that Monday through Thursday, trying to set up two evenings, five to eight, five to eight-thirty-ish, with flexible topics, but with an interest in roles and responsibilities, use of policies in the district, and some topics yet to be determined. Fair? Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, that concludes our discussion items tonight. So we'll take a short break, and then we'll go into an executive session under ORS 1926602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. So thank you for coming, everyone. Thanks again, Eric, thanks, Derek. Okay, we'll move out of executive session, back into regular session, and with no further business, we're adjourned. Thank you.